Thank you. Apologies for the late start. We were hoping for a quorum and we do not have one. So at the moment, maybe that will change. But that means we cannot, let's see. Okay, so do we want to postpone approval of the minutes then?
Yeah, I think we should. Daniel was on his way. When he arrives, we can revert to that.
Yep, so it looks like he should join us. So we'll postpone approval of the minutes. And we can move to regular business. Francis, the WLS report?
Yeah. Don't I need a quorum for somebody to listen to me?
We're listening extra hard to you.
All right. Now I'd be pleased to give you a short briefing. We had our last meeting for the year, last year's day, on the November 30th. And we also had the annual meeting, annual meeting on WLS. There was no guest speaker this time. We met virtually. And there were only two items on the agenda. One was the elections of three new trustees to replace the three who are outgoing for the next five years, 22, 26. Secondly, during the annual meeting, Terry gave a brief, but I thought an excellent report to the meeting on the activities of WLS during the past year. He singled out the results of the 2020 census in particular, which he said greatly impact the plans and activities, greatly impact the plans and activities of WLS and our 38 button libraries. Now I sort of want to just highlight some of the things he said. Most of it we already know. He said that although completed in 2020, we learned the official results of the census-related activities only recently. And some of the highlights, for example, we know about the population. It has gone up to over a million. And he said eight of the county's municipalities had a cell response rate that exceeded 80% in 2020, while in 2010, no municipality had reached that date. He said Yonkers had moved ahead of Rochester to become the third largest city in New York State. And he said that Portchester was able to identify and count an additional 80 households within the existing housing units. This is some of the highlights. Now, he said the census work has long-lasting impact on our region. And for the next 10 years, these are the numbers that will impact the federal funding received by the state. We will not, county and municipalities. And the amount of New York State library aid that we are going to be receiving WLS and the member libraries. The reason why he sort of chose to dwell on the census results, he said largely because the work was completed through the census project. It played a major role in the work that has taken place in 2021 and will continue to be addressed going forward. The relationship that was strengthened during the census project had proven invaluable as WLS worked to address challenges faced by member libraries, the staff, and the public due to the pandemic. And then he highlighted some of the problems. Two of them I thought was interesting. He said expanded interest, expanded interest in the digital resources and the programs offered by WLS and the member libraries. We have seen tremendous growth in the e-content, downloads of books, and audios and movies. And another interesting thing, he said the digital access and digital literacy. The census project helped to help us to identify communities in need that were not being addressed through existing or new federal and state programs. I think that was good. He concluded by saying that the need for public libraries and public library system is stronger now than ever. And we help individuals, the libraries, that is, help individuals and communities in good times and in bad. And the past year has been pretty bad. We help build social connections and connect people to informational resources and services. But our work is never done. But it is meaningful and important work. So he thanked everyone for all the support and the resources that were devoted during the past year. I thought it was a very, it was a very good report. So that was one. The second thing that the board did was we approved the operating budget for WLS for the next year, 2021. And we are still working on the capital budget, which should be approved as soon as it is ready.
How many trustees are there on the WLS board?
15.
15.
And... Yeah, okay. So the capital budget is still being worked on and it will only be approved as soon as it's ready. The board also elected its executive committee.
Don't go that way.
The board also elected its executive committee for the year. And US truly is going to be serving the vice president of the board.
Congratulations. Vice president.
President-elect for the following year?
It will be seven. And I'd just like to, before I end, I'd just like to remind us that the last and the third and last trustee training is going to be next Tuesday. And it's going to be devoted on personal matters.
It's the 14th December.
Next Tuesday. So if you have time, it would be nice to attend. And get your certificate, beautiful certificate.
Beautiful certificate. Source of great pride.
Okay, that is all I have to report.
Excellent. Thank you. Wonderful. Is, was Terry's report available? That he gave at the annual meeting? Francis?
Oh, sorry.
Is Terry's report available?
I think I circulate that.
Yeah. He did? You might have, and I might have missed it.
Yeah, I circulated the November 1.
The monthly report with all the reports from the...
No, the one that he was, that he gave at like his speech or whatever, his talk at the annual meeting?
Oh, the one that I just highlighted?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, it was in a note.
Got it, like a keynote speaker, okay.
Yeah, I could circulate, but it is good. Yeah, I could circulate that.
Please, thank you. Great. I don't have a whole lot for the president's report. I have more to speak about, but I will save it for the end when we talk about the strategic plan. And I will pass to you.
Thank you, Whitney. Let's see, as far as my report. Again, as I have been testifying at previous meetings, the activity of the library continues to grow in number. And it's exciting to see the library, you know, hosting more and more people. But I have to say, we are nowhere near where we were prior to the pandemic. Activity levels are down. And that is across the board, both in the county, in the state. And nationally, people are still hesitant to come back into the building. But, you know, we are seeing really some interesting sort of activity pops. And I've talked about it before, but we're seeing even larger numbers of our teens. Our teen room has been renovated. And we're seeing large numbers of teens utilizing the space. Sometimes they get a little rambunctious, but, you know, we're on it. Computer usage is popular. Use of the children's library, the spaces are also growing in popularity. The meeting rooms, the study rooms are becoming very, very popular because people are looking for individual spaces to use as they maybe study, they work on their, you know, their professional occupation. It's so, so that's an area of real interest. And Wi-Fi as well. And so, and so in terms of our operations, again, I have to report, it's slower than it had been. But we're excited to see bursts of activity. And one burst of activity is relating to our recent agreement to host the Huguenot Academy, which is the alternative high school at our library every Tuesday and Thursday. And it just started just over a week ago. And we started conversations with the superintendent, Jonathan Raymond. And then I was, he sort of reached out to me and said, is this possible? I said, absolutely, let's talk about it. So he put me in touch with the principal, who is Andrea, let's see if I can pronounce her last name, Schwach? 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 And so we had a number of meetings to talk about it, brought our staff in. And so where we are is Tuesdays and Thursdays, we are hosting Huguenot Academy students. And they're coming in sort of waves for every hour and a half or so. And I asked Andrea if she could characterize this activity because it's really transformed the library. On the second floor, where the teen area is, and other spaces, both, you know, where the periodicals will eventually end up, tables, conference rooms, study rooms, meeting rooms. They're, they're, they're in our space for 9 to 3. We love it. It just feels like we're kind of like old times again. And so Andrea wrote the following. Including our custodian and two security staff, we have 18 adults at the library, though a couple switch out with one another due to the teaching courses at the main campus. We have had 37, 38, and 41 students attend on our first three days in session. Students have had the invaluable opportunity to engage in person with not only one another, but the teachers and staff, and have been able to catch up on missed work. Additionally, we've been holding meetings with our seniors to start planning for next year. And many of our students have begun the college application process in the last week. There's a new sense of purpose and optimism with these students as they look forward to the next chapter of their lives. She ends with, we're incredibly grateful for this opportunity and appreciate you opening your space to us. So it's, it's really great because, you know, the, as we all know, the alternative high school, Huguenot Academy, was essentially washed out of the high school. They, the school district decided to rent space at Monroe College. But to get Monroe ready, it took a certain amount of retrofitting. So they really didn't have a place to go. And the students were continuing with this remote learning, which is a, it's a challenging option to put it in the nicest light. And so it was our pleasure. And, you know, and we're finding that we're still offering more. We now have an arrangement where they, they will be using the meeting room just behind us for lunch from 12:30 to 1:00. So, which is great. So they can take care of that. They've also been good with their security. They have a custodian helping clean up too as well. So it's, it's, it's been working. And it's exciting again to see the library so active. In terms of a timeframe, when I spoke to the superintendent, he seemed to think that Huguenot Academy will move into its temporary quarters at Monroe sometime in February. And I said, that's great. I said, you can stay here as long as you want. We're here, we're, we're ready to support you. Yeah, so it's really been, it's, it's been, it's been really great to host these folks and also introduce a lot of these young people to the library and their, and their resources and all of that. So, so that's sort of a fun, exciting thing. And just in terms of other things going on, we're still, of course, waiting on our two New York State construction grants. One for $342,674 for the third floor renovation. The foundation, I believe, will provide the match of $114,024. And, and that's the third floor renovation. So what you're seeing on the second floor, you'll see to some extent on the third floor, hopefully starting by this time next year. The Huguenot Children's Library grant application also, $17,813 with a library match of $5,937. And we'll be replacing the three poorly performing ductless air conditioning units that were installed with the partnership folks. So valiantly sort of brought that building back online. So that's sort of exciting too. We believe that the New York State Library and the Dormitory Authority will be reviewing the grants, our grants, and all the many, many others. And we should hopefully get news in June and then hopefully gain access to the money. It's been delayed every year increasingly. So maybe in October 2022. The second floor renovation, you've heard me drone on about this forever and ever and ever, but we're almost reaching a point where we're done. The new, the new information desk was delivered. The new setup for computers was delivered. The new addition to the Handelmann Business Center, the business area, has been delivered. Our electrician and low voltage folks are here as we speak. So we're getting that together. We have to wait for the, the top to the desk that has to be cut. But we're hoping that we'll see that maybe by early next year. And we're waiting on some shelving and then that'll be it. Yeah, it really, you know, if you haven't had the opportunity to look at it lately, you know, take a look at it or take a look at it in the next few weeks once the shelving's arrived. We're really excited that it's a space that's very functional, attractive, and, you know, it didn't cost us any municipal tax dollars, which is kind of cool. We're still waiting on two grants that we haven't gotten yet. And again, kudos to Daniel Lojieri for working so hard to allow the library to qualify. And that's the emergency connectivity fund monies, which will allow us to buy Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots to circulate to our public. And also our E-rate monies, which will allow us to improve infrastructure throughout the building. The E-rate monies will require a match with which the board agreed to. The connectivity monies, we don't have to throw in anything, which is, which is great. Let's see, what else? Francis talked about the New York, the New York State Trustee Handbook Club, so to speak, as they call it, which is coming up on the 14th, which is great to do. AARP. As you folks know, it's arguably our most successful project. And that is the tax preparation team that comes here year after year after year. You know, volunteers who work two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, have been tremendously dedicated, stay long after they're supposed to leave. And then no charge help our residents with their tax filings. And also if allowed, will submit them electronically as well. Last year, because of the pandemic, there was a very restricted program because AARP National Office wouldn't allow volunteers to go into the, go into the library. So there was sort of a remote process, which did not see a huge amount of success just because it just involved, you know, people scanning or, or, you know, sort of digitizing their tax documents and then sending them off. It's just a lot to ask for people. So I've been in touch with Tim Oberg, who is the fellow that really leads this program, a nice guy. And he tells me, this was just yesterday, that they are anticipating coming back to our library and using two models. One is a two-visit scanning model, where taxpayers with appointments will come to the library for an intake interview and have their tax info scanned into the computer system. Taxpayers will keep their original documentation. The returns will be prepared by the volunteers from their own homes. Then the taxpayers will return to the library with an appointment and then review the documents, approve them, and then have them submitted electronically. And this model apparently was employed in other sites last year. And they projected could be very successful and efficient. They said the exposure time for taxpayers and volunteers could amount to 30 minutes or less. Now, there's a second model that they're talking about, which is the same-day drop-off model. And both models may coexist too as well. The taxpayers with appointments will come to the library for an intake interview, drop off their tax data, and leave the tax prep area. The tax returns will be created on the same day by volunteers working at the library. Taxpayers will be need to be available to talk with the volunteers by phone or in person somewhere in the library to resolve questions. Taxpayers return with appointments same day, review their returns, approve them, and have them submitted. And again, 30 minutes or less. So I mailed Tim and said, we're 100% behind this approach. This was probably the most missed program of all our many popular programs last year. We typically serve well over 1,000 people a year and just, you know, from, you know, January into mid-April. So, so we will dedicate the theater and the meeting room. You know, we can work with them in terms of security, appointments. You know, we'll do whatever it takes because we know it's a really popular program and a program that people need. And the staff characterized anecdotally, the most phone calls they got during closure really more related to the tax season where people, you know, didn't have the resources to, to either do it themselves or hire, you know, an accountant or a firm. So, so I'm excited, you know, to do that. And we're going to start the process of publicizing that in the near future. So that's that. Let's see what else is happening. Just, I just want to congratulate all the people that participated in the parade. We had a number of staff members. Whitney was there with her daughter. We had Chris Sullen from the foundation. We had Joy Levy from the Friends. It was a lot of fun. We marched from the tennis court on North Avenue, right in front of the high school, all the way downtown. And the weather was great. Yeah, a lot of people outside. So that was, that was, that was a happy success. The Friends, the Friends have had two holiday book sales with November very successful, earning quite a bit of money. The December one just concluded pretty successful as well. And Amy asked me to tell everybody that there are still lots of pretty new books, and older books too, that are available because, of course, people bought their own books during the pandemic and many of them were donated to the library. So that if you're looking for a holiday gift, or just a gift, or something for yourself, there's lots of really good things. And the Friends are open Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. And Amy and her people, they're amazing. They come, they work hard. There's not a lot of them at this point in time, and they keep it going. And we're working on, as always, an annual budget for them to support our programs. You know, some collection development and some other special sorts of projects or efforts as well. One effort that we're working on is, the library wants to be very much part of the Jew Teen Celebrations in June of this year. And so the Friends will be setting aside some money for that and all the other programs for children, for teens, and for adults that we do and can't do without, without them. And the foundation as well, they're always working hard on our behalf. And we're lucky to have them. It's another advocacy group. Their annual appeal letter went out. And so they're, you know, seeking people who, right around this season, before the, you know, before the year ends, to consider making a donation. Let's see, there's a foundation board meeting scheduled for January 18th. I'm not sure what the time is. I'm not sure if it'll be in person or Zoom. All the meetings since the pandemic have been Zoomed. They're hoping to bring it in the building and live, but don't, I don't know if they know yet. Tonight is the Cocktails and Conversation Program that relates to ideas for gifts, for books, holiday gifts. And there's a great panel there, including Jeff Pearlman, who is a terrific sports journalist, written some great books, knew Michelle Guy. And everybody knows Deirdre Clark. She is also on that panel. I think she's moderating as well. And, and the foundation is beginning to more actively plan for their May 12 gala event. And I think it's at the Green Tree. I'm not quite sure. And that's it. Of the foundation. The foundation is going to have a gala on May 12th? Oh, one other thing, and it really, just I'll make it brief. But it really, it was interesting. Francis touched on it. And that is the issue during the pandemic and even before of the, of the trend towards use of electronic resources, you know, overdrive of both eBooks and e-audiobooks. And we're looking at activity levels and monies, how we spend them. And it's just kind of amazing. When we first really started with overdrive in 2017, 18, we had a total number of CIRCs of 15,053 titles. We ended, let's see, December 2021, the previous year, we had 56,715. Yeah. And, but along with that, we've seen a decline in print because the library has been closed. People are not coming in. You know, curbside was active, and we still pull things aside for people. But I think it's really important to mention, and Francis mentioned, the Westchester Library System contributing a significant amount of money. But libraries are also adding as well. And we have stepped up and added some money. But I think we probably, as we look towards the formulation of next year's budget, we might want to increase that amount because it's just become tremendously popular. And we'll also be looking at how we spend our money on our traditional resources and maybe start shaving a little bit from that too. Not too much, but, I mean, we have to acknowledge the reality that, you know, e-materials are really popular. And it allows people who are anxious to come into the library to, to, to access. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Any questions from anyone so far?
Now, the grant money, once it's approved, why does it take so long for the money to reach you in a usable form? I mean, is it something we do have a...
Grant, grant money.
Oh, God, Francis, that's a great question. You know, when the Westchester Library System approves, your board approves it, it's usually based on a recommendation by a group of county directors who do not have a stake in that grant program. So they're unbiased. And then, then you folks approve the recommendations typically. And then it goes to the state of New York, and it gets just kind of logged out in bureaucracy, where the New York State Library looks at it and also the Dormitory Authority. And I mean, Daniel, you probably have had them. And it just is so slow.
I've got a 2019 grant approved just now. Restrictions on it, where you have to get a legal, you know, your lawyer needs to sign off. You have to open a separate bank account, it has to go in a separate fund.
It's pretty tedious, isn't it? Yeah. I mean, and it's frustrating. And when I started 16 years ago, when we, this was the first time we got grants, we would hear in May or June, and then the money would arrive in July. And now it's, we're happy to get it in October.
That's why we love foundations.
Quick, quick turnaround.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to make you feel better at work, there's a grant that hasn't come in yet. I think it's seven years ago. Seven years ago, so.
We're going to be awarded.
It's awarded?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not in contract yet. It's not, you know, it's not, it's a, it's a slog. Great, thank you. Before we go on to committee reports, let's go back and approve our minutes so we can make sure we take care of that. We needed you, Daniel, for a quorum. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. If you didn't, please do so now. Okay? Oh, yeah. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
Great, can we get a second? Brad, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Nope, great, so the minutes have been approved. Oh, yes, sorry, Tom. You should jump right into it.
Yeah, no, no, no. You kind of want to cut me off.
Oh, excellent, don't let me do this.
Too much words. I'll make this quick. We do have some announcements. First of all, we have two employees, one a new hire and one a resignation. And I'm going to ask for a motion in a second. The new hire, we're really excited, is a new librarian trainee in the children's room. Her name is Florence Semenola. And she is from Africa, I think, from Nairobi, Kenya. And she's living here. And so she will be an hourly librarian that will be, her start date is the, was November 12th of this year. Her salary start was $24.21. And the other side of that, we had a woman who was a page in the children's room, Beatrice Gallioso Alvarez, who resigned. Sheer last day was November 12th of this year. And her salary upon her departure was $14 an hour.
Great, I can make a motion to approve the new hire, Florence Semenola, and to accept the resignation of Beatrice Gallioso Alvarez. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
And this is not a, no, sorry. And this is not technically, we need a personal action. But we have a, a kind... And this is not technically, we need a, a personal action, but we have a, a contract position for hourly programming teen assistant. And the young man that we had before, Luis, you know, Luis.
Vicencio.
Yeah, Vicencio, was wonderful. He was with us for a number of years, but he was able to get full-time employment, so he, he left us sadly. But we had a great recruitment. We had some really good candidates. And this is a contract position. It's not a civil service position. And after competitive process, we hired a young man who's born and raised and went to school here in New Rochelle. His name is Constantine Zaiagas. And he's, he started on the 6th, which was Monday, I think. Yep. And his start salary is $22.76. And he's a bright young guy. He's a graduate of Drexel. He's got training in a sort of gaming, planning, and just, it seems, you know, it's early and he's getting used to the kids and the kids vice versa, but we're, we're glad to have him. And this is non-action related, but I wanted to give you an update since I, I think you, you'll be interested to hear. At long last, we got through the civil service issue and we started interviewing assistant directors. And we had eight candidates who we called to come, to come in vis a vis Zoom to be interviewed. And we started on Monday. We've interviewed six of them and we have two more candidates on Monday and then we'll be done. And I can tell you that it's been a really interesting process. We have a really good group of candidates who I think, I think one of them could certainly be the assistant director. But what will happen is, our panel has been, myself and department heads. We've got, the department heads will be working with the candidates to have a chance to meet and talk, ask questions, assess answers. And then at some point, we're going to have a meeting with Whitney, probably through Zoom, and any other board member who's interested is welcome to participate in which myself and all the department heads will talk about what they heard. And then we'll make decisions about who the finalists are. And then bring the finalists into the library with board participation and some staff participation as well. So, so that's very exciting. We have a good group of, good group of candidates. Our library assistant and circulation and first floor information desk, again, we had another competitive process. It was a tough decision, but we chose to hire Amanda Burgos, who will begin on January 3rd. I won't ask for a vote until she formally starts, you know, in the library, so we're excited to have her. She, of course, is a New Rochelle resident, uses the library, is a graduate of WCC and Mercy College, and she is bilingual. So, and when we checked her references and many of, and her previous employers, she has worked with Spanish-speaking populations, which was something that we really wanted to achieve. Another position, programming coordinator, we've gotten the applications and there were some good ones and we're hoping to set up interviews hopefully later next week. And librarian to children's, that also has been posted. And hourly laborer, part-time, no posting yet. So that's it. Happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
That's great. I don't have a, a question, but I just wanna congratulate you and say thank you because I know hiring is a lot of work and in addition to the work that you already do. I know that that's, takes time and, yeah, and it's absolutely great. I know you've made some great hires recently. Seems like that's working out and everyone is, is where they're meant to be, which is great. So, great, that brings us to.
Do we have to make a motion today for Amanda?
No, not yet.
Amanda starts on the 3rd.
Yeah, but she starts, yeah.
Next, and next, the January meeting.
Yep. Thanks. So we, we can start our committee reports. I don't think the Budget Committee has anything to report. And I don't believe the Buildings and Grounds Committee has anything to report for this meeting. And that brings us to Community Relations.
Okeydokey. So, Community Relations. So first, I'm with, oh, thank you, I had it on my phone. Great. So first, I wanna start off with just a quick announcement. Our very own Francis Aquilo will be in a, will be moderating a panel on December 12th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's through the United, United Nations Association of the United States of America, the Westchester Chapter. The topic is Celebrate Human Rights Day 2021. You can join us in person or join online. It is on, on the Links Incorporated Facebook page, the UN, as well as the County Youth Bureau. My friend and colleague, Dr. Demia Harris Madden is one of the local speakers. And as I said, Ambassador Francis Aquilo is one of the moderators, along with Judge Dolores Rathwith from Greenberg Town Court. So I, I will encourage individuals to kinda get on. It is on December 12th, Sunday, December 12th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Right?
Is it via Zoom?
Both, online and in person. In person, I don't have a location.
Harrison.
Harrison Library. Harrison Library. Look at that.
It's limited to about 25 people.
So you can join online. I'm assuming probably Harrison Library was gonna post on their website?
I suppose so.
Cool. And then just some updates from our Community Relations, from the Help and Learning Center happenings. This is in November, December 2021. ERAB, if anyone who does not know the abbreviation, is the Emergency Rental Assistant Program through New York State. It continues here at the library through the Hudson Valley Justice Center. Counselors for the ERAB Rental Assistant Program and Free Legal Advice, focused on eviction and immigration. Nonprofits groups, and this is the beauty of libraries being social hubs, tablings at New Rochelle Public Library, People USA, a New York Project co provider of COVID-19 Crisis Counseling Program that provides information, education, emotional support, and links to resources. Urban Strategies, which is a new early head start program in New Rochelle, and Montefiore Hospital Diabetes Education Center. There's been an uptake in one-on-one assistance with unemployment and ID, which is a, which is a good new, it's good news. Verification, award letters, social security credit reports for housing and COVID travel documents for traveling overseas. Been a lot of the advocacy and facilitation, helping families go through that process, especially everything is pretty much done online or over the phone. Many patrons are searching for holiday employment, but as many may or may not know, everything is done online. So navigating the resources, if you're not computer savvy, having someone to help you, it's always a plus to get that going. Civic and citizenship classes with immigration attorney, attorney Sonica Dixon will resume in January 2022. The Healthcare Navigator, Elizabeth Blackwell, will return in person starting in January as well, 2022, to assist with open enrollment for health coverages and, and a qualified health plan. And outreach and information session was, was given for the New Rochelle High School Alternative, High School Orientation at the, at the theater here. Morning and evening meetings, a brief overview of the New Rochelle Public Library, important database resources, teen areas, youth employment resources, college scholarships, opportunities were discussed. And one thing I'm excited about is seeing this is a $500, $500 were awarded to New Rochelle Public Library for the Opportunity Youth Part. They started a book club and a mentoring, a book club that incorporated the mentoring programs or mentors from our community, as well as that youth, young adults actually that are part of the Opportunity Youth Part that started through Judge Jared Rice's court. It's a new innovative way of approaching young adults and a court system. And they incorporated this, this book club and mentoring component. I know Cory, you are a mentor for some of our, for OYP participants. And it was through the New York Community Trust and efforts of longtime resident Anne Spindel, a good friend. And the funds will help purchase books for their, for their mentor book club, where mentors and the participants are able to engage in dialogue about topics that are relevant and current into current day situations for a lot of our young people. And that's it.
I, I'm just.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, I'm so happy, Daniel, that you mentioned Judge Rice's program because it's truly innovative and it's really helping young people who have made some poor decisions sort of pull their life together. And there's, it's such an impressive program. We actually, at Rotary, Francis was there, Judge Rice and Colleen Gardethy really talked all about the genesis during the beginning of the pandemic and so many people and how they've been, been helped. And I've been in touch with Colleen since then. And Denise also is obviously in touch. And we've already said that we want to be a partner. We can be a physical plant where, that, where they can, the, the folks can come in and use our, whether it be this theater, a training lab, a study room. So that's something that really we're on board with. When we finally receive the money for the loan of Wi-Fi hotspots and Chromebooks, if some of the folks that are in this program need that kind of technology, we could probably do something there too as well. So that's sort of very exciting. The other thing I wanna mention is something that we have participated in last year for the first time and we're going to be doing it again. And it's, it's called the Five Town One Book Effort. And it's in tandem with Cure, which is the Coalition for the Understanding Racism Through Education, which is based here in Marneck. And last year, we worked with Cure and we, Deirdre was our moderator and we hosted, oh, got it, can't just.
It was Kate, it was the cast.
Cast, the cast, Isabel Wilkerson. So they've been lucky enough to receive additional funding, so there'll be a second phase, a second year. And the book that we will be discussing, all five communities, which includes New Rochelle, Larchmont, Rye, Harrison, and Marneck. Thank you. I am, uh, thank you, Daniel. Is Heather McGee's The Some of Us. And we have been asked to once again, serve as the host site for Heather McGee. And we agreed, we're gonna use this theater. It will be on March 27th. And our people can work with the technology team to make it available as a livestream as well. And then there'll be other programs in communities that will deal with this book. And we've also said we'd like to, in addition to being the host, we'd also like to be the site too as well. So we haven't met lately. I suspect we probably won't until the beginning of the new year, but that's sort of exciting. That's it.
That is phenomenal. We, we're actually very fortunate to have absorbed one of the leaders of Cure, a new, a New Rochelle transplant from Marneck, Larchmont actually, who is very involved in Cure. And we just finished reading The Some of Us for our Webster PTA Equity Committee that we started during the summer of 2020. And so we're now in our second year. We've read four books and Heather McGee was, The Some of Us was the last one that we finished. And we're just voting on our fifth book. So we have a little mini book club with parents from Webster School, which has been, it's like the most active committee for, for PTA and really engaging parents in, in like just wonderful, difficult, important ways. So I'm proud of that work and happy to see that Cure is pushing forward with another book. And that book is really great. She's an economist, but she lays out like case after case after case after case about how important it is that we see these systems for what they are. So, good, I'm pumped. Excellent. Good, okay, thank you, Daniel.
Are you offering to moderate?
I, I will be there. I will be there no matter what. This sounds, this is very exciting.
If we had a local program, would you, would you or your team be interested?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I, I can guarantee we have really, you know, people are like chomping at the bit to.
So I'll reach out to them and let them know that, you know, your Webster PTA Equity Group had this as a book. Could you?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the woman, again, from Cure, we already have that connection because she's still very active in Cure.
Is it Nicole?
It's Conan.
Okay.
Conan Jeff is one of the active people. So she's, yeah, so, but we'll keep talking for sure. I think this stuff is, is just fantastic. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Tom. Finance Committee?
Nothing to report.
Nope.
The, the one thing I'd like to just say is that the audit, as done by the school district, is complete.
I was gonna add.
Right, and it's in our folders and fund balance has increased by $67,000. And in terms of if you have questions, Cory, I would encourage you to reach out to Gene and to myself. And we could, you know, go over it in more detail.
That's great.
So how often to meet with Gene before?
Sorry?
How would they meet with Gene? Probably at the beginning of the year, we said the top of the year?
Gene?
To, we said the top of the year to convert to the new banking relationship.
The banking relationship.
Yeah, we had a conversation about that.
Yep, so.
Initially, in the conversation I had with Tom today, that would be in the conversation we can have all along.
Okay, very good. So then, um, that's it, I was going to. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Committee? I know Lucille's not here. Do you wanna wait for, pass on that committee for now?
We are, we are, I'm on the committee. Sorry, although we are, we are still in the process of meeting and we have a meeting next, there's several meetings, like two or three next week, right? So.
Wednesday.
Fifteen.
No, Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday.
Sixteen.
Yes, yes. So we'll probably have something to report January.
Excellent. Great. Thanks, Tom. Keeps me updated and I've been following the emails, so, thank you. Policy Committee? We don't have anything yet, right? Okay, I know that the three main policies, we can talk about next month and between now and then, that we'll, we'll connect more on those. Great, almost there. We got one more Special Projects Committee and the report on the strategic plan and the needs assessment. So we are imminently ready to have this document shared publicly. Public Works sent us a draft. We did a very thorough, I can take my mask off for this. We had a very thorough kind of feedback process from the board, from our Strategic Planning Committee, and from the staff of the library, who provided really, really thoughtful feedback. Our committee met last month and we funneled all of that feedback, some of which is relevant to the strategic plan, some of it is more operational. Public Works Partners will help us to parse out which is which. Some of it is both. And having reviewed all of the feedback, we kind of realized that there were a few things missing from the draft. And to Public Works Partners' credit, they were really worried about us missing some kind of deadline to file our strategic plan. And so, you know, they kind of gave us something that is, is technically usable, but it doesn't have kind of the, the thrust behind it that we know it can. And so we've asked them to, to, to think about that. And specifically, something that we're asking them to do, which is additional work for them, requiring us to extend their engagement vis a vis a change order, which they are in the process of creating a proposal for, is to create a, a section of our strategic plan that, that basically provides context for what we're doing now. And by that, I mean, they're looking at the 2015 to 2020, was it 2016 to 2020 or 2015 to 2020, strategic plan, the last one from the previous five years. So they're looking at that and Tom and others are helping to discern what of those goals and objectives have been tackled, have been completed, or haven't been tackled at all, and kind of for what reasons. Maybe priorities have shifted, maybe we didn't have the money, maybe we just didn't have the bandwidth for other reasons, and maybe we've really accomplished a lot and we wanna make sure that we are pointing to that so that there's continuity between one set of, of objectives and, and this new batch coming. So I think that will, it will kind of create a road and not just stepping stones. And so I'm excited for them to be working on that. And we've all kind of committed to trying to get this final, final by the end of January. So I'm hoping by. So I'm hoping by this time in January, this time next month, we'll be able to report on that, to that end. So thanks for your patience with that, but I think it's going to be good. And it's a five-year document, so we don't want to, we didn't want to rush it. And if anyone has any questions on that, no, you're all heard all about it before, then that brings us to our public to be heard. We have Mr. Troy Brown.
How's everyone doing on the boards this evening? This is my actual first time, actually not my first time, but my first time as far as with the mic in my hand. So excuse me if I cough up a bit. All right, so this ban, excuse me, this ban, I got this ban maybe about perhaps two months ago. I'm not too, hold on, September 13th. So it's three months ago. And in this letter, when I first got the letter, I was a bit like, you know, I was like, maybe, I was like, maybe this time I actually did it, you know, this time I actually effed up. And I'm probably going to be away from the library for a while. So when I looked at some of the accusations, you know, the ban is for two years, the two-year period. And it's basically, they're basically, they're basically saying that my conduct, conduct, the conduct in following manner, which is harassing staff and creating a public disturbance. Now, the public disturbance thing, I might, you know, that's, that's, that's kind of a toss-up because sometimes when I'm in there, when I come into the library and I'm a bit animated, I can put, I put my headphones on and I got them on full blast. So sometimes I may get, like I said, I may, there may be some animation and I may be like, and I may blurt out some lyrics. So that, now the public disturbance part of it, which I highlighted, I'm like, okay, that may be an actual, you know, an actual fact. But the harassing staff is what really, you know, took me to the next level because not only is that a strong accusation, you know, harassing, it's, it's, it's false. It's, it's discrediting and it's, and it's a bit disheartening coming from a patron who's been, who's been utilizing this library for about, I would say, five years now. And for the most part, it's, you know, it's cool coming here. I don't really have to, you know, the, not the patrons, but the library, just the staffs, they know what we're dealing with at times when I, you know, when I'm kind of like a little amped up and rubbed up. So and there's this, this one particular lady. Where I think this, when this ban was issued, the, 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 um, the actual sequence leading up to this ban was like, I came in, this gentleman behind me, he let me know. He said, when you come in to the library, come in through that way. So I kind of, I came in through this way. And as I was walking to the security, I know, as I was going upstairs, I was like, oh, snap. This guy told me to come in through the other way. So I told the security, I was like, hey, man, I made a mistake. And the lady who led me, I want to say she harasses me, but she kind of like picks, picks bones with me and stuff like that. I don't know why. I'm not, you know, I'm not making any, you know, I don't, I have no idea about. But nonetheless, she, you know, she kind of like gestured to work with security and I was like, oh, here she go again. And now, so I'm sitting there and I'm like, what, what, what's the deal this time? I was like, I told him, you know, I was kind of, I got frustrated. I'm like, I just told him that I went through the wrong way. And now, so now we kind of got into that little thing. So they kind of, I think they told me to leave for the day. And when I, the following day I came back, I was issued this, this, this beautiful letter, this beautiful letter here. And I was just, you know, I was kind of like taken aback by it because I was like, and then, you know, and when I read it and I was like, okay, public disturbance, I could see, I could see, I could see where that, where, you know, where they may have found me, you know, found me guilty of that, but not necessarily guilty, but you know, just found me like, okay, he committed that act. But harassing staff, like I said, that strong accusation is enough to, you know, call somebody to really, really be off the hots, if you know what I mean. So that's why, you know, when I came in and thankfully they let me know the date, I was like, thank God, you know, that there's a pro and a cons with the cameras. Because, you know, if you could show me harassing somebody, especially, you know, within September 13th was the day this was issued, so you would probably have to go back. But if you could actually show and exhibit, you know, exhibit that kind of, me exhibiting that kind of conduct, that would be very thoroughly interesting.
Thank you for your comments. Marjorie Sax? You're good? Thank you. Great. Does anyone else have any comments, thoughts? No? Okay, then I would like to make a motion to adjourn for the evening. Can I get a second?
Second, no, sorry.
No?
I want to welcome, and being the last meeting, I want to wish everyone a very happy holiday.
Happy holidays. Yes, thank you. Good. So we halted our adjournment to say happy holidays to each other publicly. Thank you, you two. You two, peaceful, healthy holidays to all.
Also, congratulations to Daniel.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah.
From the child.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm like, four? Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Wonderful.
I, as everyone's questioned, are you sleeping somewhere?
Yeah, that's right.
Are you doing, I'm okay.
You're okay.
She's good. She's healthy and growing, so.
Very nice.
Her big sister is excited. Can't wait for her, play with her. I told her, she's, she's, you know, she's like two weeks, so she's like, this many? Yeah.
That's fine.
All good. Thank you very much.
Good, okay. I will make another motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Gavel, we've adjourned. Thank you.